Good evening, welcome to Board of Education April 10th work session. Calling the meeting to order and I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, a second.
Motion is second to approve the agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay, we're gonna start on our continuation of the superintendent's evaluation tool. Our goal is to complete this today. All we should have left after this is just edits and a review of the changes we've made. So like Mrs. Wright did with the first work that we did, I appreciate her putting all that into a document. I know we've been talking about my personal opinion, well, okay, let me finish what we're gonna do today, then we're gonna complete, I believe we need to go maybe review a little on standard four, 'cause we kinda rushed to the end, and then work on five, six, and seven. We also need to discuss the rating and numbers of the rating, where we, how we, there's been some concern and ideas about putting actual numbers on the score to make scores, so it can be documented that way when we do the evaluation, so, but I wanna get that all clear too before we put it forward as the instrument we're gonna use.
As I understand it, we're gonna start with four, and work, finish four, and then work forward.
And work five, six, and seven, right.
We got rid of seven, didn't we?
Well, I'm not sure, we were and then we weren't, so we need to talk about that.
Yes.
I went through that again.
I think we took seven off, as I understood it.
I think we added professionalism to that, so.
Okay.
When we, when we get to that, we changed it from ethical leadership, probably alone, and added "and professionalism."
Okay.
And I have thoughts on that too, taking out the whole ethical word, and professionalism, professional leadership or something like that is, so, we should talk about when we get to seven if we can, that would be, I think we should do it now, I don't, I don't mind, but.
No, go, just go ahead.
And the other thing is, we, I think we, we need to, I went through, it's very hard to do some of the, I think we did miraculous the last meeting to get what we did done, 'cause when I went through trying to match things for today, it kinda got overwhelmed, a little bit overwhelmed, what I was trying to do. We've talked about it being too large, but I'm not sure it is, it's only about, right now it's a couple pages more than the original 15 I had, so it'll probably be up to about 20, I'm guessing. I don't know that that's so bad, 'cause what we're doing, we're not necessarily adding more work, we're adding some clarity and some, a little more, more explanations of what the superintendent can do to meet the performance indicator that we have. So I, you know, we can cut some of it out, but I think what it does is give her ideas of the kinds of things she can do to meet the performance indicator. That's the way I'm reading is, do you see it that way too?
I do, and I think also that once we put the indicators in that we've been discussing, that we're gonna come back and probably do some narrowing, and we'll look at what is redundant, and so I think it will probably end up a little less bulky than it is right now.
But redundancy is okay, I just, as I was going through it though, I think they, it throws out really good ideas for each item that we're trying to accomplish.
I agree.
And I'm not sure it's necessarily too big because of that. You understand what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
'Cause I read through it, what Jackie put down and what the changes we made, and it just adds more clarity, like you've got a 4.1 instead of just a word on, say, standard four. Instead of just saying monitors and evaluates the management of operational systems, it gives, like, right there, it gives, that was the biggest one, it gives like 10 ideas of how she would do that, is the way I understand it. So, but I understand what you're saying, Dr. Kane, and there are some duplications in here, because we moved them and merged them, and so I knew we were gonna have some of that going on.
Right.
Some of the words, I think, even repeat, so, but I wasn't prepared to edit it yet, that's kind of an editing thing, I think, and I guess that's what we, if we can get through, if we can plodge, what the word is, get through the three more items, standards, then we can go back and review some of them, and just kinda glance at the individual ones and make sure we're not repeating ourselves in them.
Okay.
It would be my way, idea, how we move forward.
Okay, so we're gonna finish revisions and adding and editing tonight?
If we can, we wanna add.
Mrs. Wright will put that together and send to us for proofing.
Correct.
Okay. Could we also address the four, ineffective, needs improvement, effective, and highly effective? Could we not just go ahead and merge ineffective, needs improvement? That way we only have three classifications, rather than having four, you need a beginning, you need a middle, and you need an end. See what I mean? That way, that will also make this document so, not so cumbersome.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with that.
It's like, it's like having satisfactory, it's like having outstanding satisfactory and unsatisfactory. Why not have only just three, rather than four?
Yeah, 'cause if it's unsatisfactory, it's gonna need improvement anyway.
Exactly. So that whole thing about needs improvement, just put it under ineffective and saying.
Merge it.
Merge it. And not have, not have all the lengthy descriptions, just saying, it's needs improvement in this area, blah, blah, blah.
Oh, it gets you to change the, well, the wording, the way I read the wording is like, ineffective, say, management of district, I'm looking, okay, I was on four, let's just go to one.
Look, we don't have to get into it right now, but just consider only having three.
I don't think that's a problem.
Okay.
I don't think a superintendent is going to be ineffective. I mean, I think that, that person wouldn't even be in that position if they're totally ineffective.
Well, then just call it needs improvement, rather than ineffective.
Yeah, I mean, so I'm in agreement with you.
So it'd be needs improvement, satisfactory, effective, and, you know what I'm saying? Just, we don't need to have four standards. I mean, it's not standards.
I see what you mean, because say, policy and government, ineffective is not engaged in work related to policies, does not enforce policies. We're not gonna have somebody sitting in this position that is that way, they would, the needs improvement makes more sense, in my opinion, it's, if we got someone like that, we're really in big trouble.
Okay. But you still need to have it here, because if that were happening, this is your way to address it.
Yeah, yes, okay.
This is your way to evaluate it and bring correction. Ineffective, needing improvement, effective, and highly effective, to me, and then that whole needs improvement can go under ineffective. That way we have three classifications, and this is, you know, and this is what needs to be addressed.
So we somehow merge the descriptions of those two into one?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, I'm okay with that, you're gonna call it what?
Ineffective.
Yeah, we're gonna call it.
Ineffective.
We could just call it needing improvement, 'cause if they're ineffective, they need improvement.
Okay, call it needing, okay, I was just making it more professional by saying ineffective, effective, and highly effective.
Oh.
Keeping the, keeping the, you know.
Consistent.
Consistent. Ineffective, needing improvement, and here it is. It's just consistent.
Okay, 'cause you can look at it the other way too, if they engage minimally in policy work, then they're ineffective. So, okay, I see what you mean, Tammy, yeah, I was trying to go the other direction.
At this point, less right now, it's.
Sure.
It's.
Okay, everyone agree, we'll merge those together, that's all the ineffective.
Ineffective.
Effective, highly effective.
Thank you.
I understand what you're saying, yeah, thank you. All right, so we'll change, and then we'll change all the.
So what were we on, on standard, performance standard four, that we didn't have?
Yeah, I was just, and I was just wanting to go back and review that real quick.
I went through it quickly though.
Yes, quickly.
I think that was the.
I don't know if anyone had a chance to go back and look at theirs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Talked about that.
Yeah.
Talked about that.
In there, somewhere, I thought we should be putting in the school monitoring, we don't, there's a lot of work that goes into school monitoring, and it's not listed in here, as far as I can tell, you have monitors and evaluates, but I wanted to add a bullet in there that says conducts routine school monitoring visits throughout the district.
We have that, instructional leadership.
Oh, we do, okay, all right. That's toward the back.
Number five, thank you.
Okay, see, I didn't remember seeing that. And.
It's under L2.
And, did it say L2?
We want to move that into instructional, so we wanna put that in performance five, which we haven't done yet.
Performance programs.
In the very end of that, we have monitors and assesses the effect of programs or curriculum on student achievement.
Mm-hmm. And on, let's see, which one is that? That's, instruction was L, domain L. Which we haven't gotten to yet. And where are we? So, because we're matriculating two different documents here.
Yes.
So, we haven't gotten to, I do not believe, instructional leadership.
Which goes in, is, performance five, right.
Correct.
We haven't gotten to that one yet, I thought that was four.
And that, mm-hmm, and that is, that is pretty explicit there, performance standard L2, the superintendent oversees the, well, no, that's not that, alignment of assigned programs, where are you looking, Mr. P, L2?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Monitors, the coordination of instructional programs with state and local standards.
Just coming to page.
Right there.
Okay, so, so if you look at the white paper, AAS one, and it has domain L, instructional leadership, under performance standard L2, performance indicators, at the top of the second column, it's talking about the superintendent monitors, the coordination of instructional programs with state and local standards, works with the board, staff, and community, provides direction and support in planning and implementing activities and program consistent with continuous improvement efforts and attainment of instructional goals. So it probably is captured here, but also on the document that Ms. Wright did, where we are looking at performance standard five, it does reference, the superintendent monitors and assesses the effect of, the effect of the programs and/or curriculum on student achievement.
Okay, I guess that fits in there, then. We could actually make that one of the suggested data and documentation, at the bottom there, saying, you know, monitor, what is it, conducts routine school monitoring visits throughout the district.
So you wanna put that in.
And the purpose of that is to determine their progress.
Sure.
And instructional goals, meeting their instructional goals, is kinda the statement I was thinking of putting in there. We could put that under data, I'm on, I'm on performance five, performance standard five, suggested data and documentation, to put in there, conducts routine school monitoring visits throughout the district to determine progress on instructional goals. I'll do that to you, too. Now, the big question I've been really, really struggling with is, where do we reflect closing achievement gaps, which is an equity, I've searched through this, there's little equity here and there, but I don't know if we're putting the emphasis on it that we need, 'cause that seemed.
Would that not be under curriculum instruction, instruction, the lens of equity?
Yep, and we added, remember, we added a piece that was from my goals that referenced equity as well.
That was under visionary leadership, in my.
Right, that was visionary leadership, I recall. And if we feel that that's where it belongs, it's fine, I just wanna be sure we give it the emphasis it needs.
Right, we also address it in the first one as well, even though it says visionary leadership, if you look under standard one, we talked about 1.2, collects and uses data to identify goals, assess organizational effectiveness, and promote organizational learning, and we also talk about identifying strength and weaknesses in programs, promotes continuous and sustainable improvement. But let me go back and look and see what we said for the equity piece.
I found that most of this performance standard number five, that's listed on this page from here, I found that a lot of that was not useful. Uses child development and learning theories, designs assessments aligned with curriculum, I mean, all that is covered under collaborative instruction decision making. Creates accountability data systems, now that one, no, that one probably, doesn't actually create accountability data systems, there, I would say, uses them rather than creates. So some of this stuff is already incorporated in some of your other, I found.
And then, once we've already been through.
Yes.
Okay.
Designs curriculum aligned with standards that anticipate, you know, occupational trends, could also put on there with the, through the lens of equity, and then measures student progress using appropriate techniques, all that can be incorporated, so I think they're kind of.
Yeah, they're in there without actually saying it.
Yeah, yes, 'cause they're already included in those things.
Yeah, right.
I mean, 'cause if you're, if you're using all these appropriate curriculum instruction tools, this stuff is already there. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, you're using it, I mean, it's there.
Correct, correct. I apologize, because we were talking about two different things.
Sorry.
That's all right, no problem. We were talking about the equity piece and where we put that from my goals, and that was supposed to be in the rubric that comes behind goal one.
Okay.
According to my notes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So, Ms. Wright, we need to make sure that that gets there.
The highly effective rubric?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is that what your notes say?
Yeah, well, I don't see it there either.
Yeah, so it should, we, I had a note to add the equity piece from the goals.
Okay, it's gonna go behind 1.0, or just? No, right inside that rubric, no, the next.
In the chart.
Yeah. Where, in performance one.
At the next page.
Yeah, right there. So in here, we need to just add the, which one is straight out of her, okay, her goals, which was a really good, covers the whole thing for the lens of equity in my mind.
And then I apologize, Ms. Harper, what were you saying about the next one?
So, and, under performance standard number five, there's 5.3, 5.4, 5.5, 5.6, I just feel like all that can be incorporated under 5.1 or 5.2, you know, it doesn't need to be.
Oh, yeah.
There, you know what I'm saying?
Correct, 'cause, right.
It's pretty much redundant.
'Cause we're not creating anything new.
Not creating, you're using the tools that are there.
Yeah.
And you're, you're monitoring progress, you're, you're anticipating trends, you're, I mean, this is all a part of the scope of the work.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
So why not, why not, you know, make it a collaborative sentence to cover it all?
So you wanna back that up to one, sustains a focus on teaching and learning, emphasizes collaborative instructional decision making.
I put all of it.
With high expectations and engagement.
Merge it somehow.
Merge it. And I'm looking under the AAS, and I don't see it anywhere here where it could.
Would you say that one more time?
So works with staff to develop a written plan for the coordination, articulation of current, current curricular goals, you know, that would anticipate, you know, occupational trends, career knowledge and career readiness, lens of equity, it could, I mean, we could design this that it would incorporate all that, 'cause it's part of the job, all there.
So standard five is, coincides with L, correct?
Yes, that's where I'm looking.
You're on L.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to find the words that they have to use it, 'cause all this is here. Uses accountability and data systems to monitor the student and school system progress, and the impact of instructional learning, I mean, all that's included.
So look under, look under L2, performance indicators, and the first and fourth indicators, first and fourth bullets in that first column there.
Yes.
Where we talk about articulating the goals, the objectives, and frameworks to staff and others, but then the fourth one, providing direction, so not necessarily creating or designing accountability systems or the actual curriculum, but providing direction and support in implementing them.
With using accountability and data systems that monitor the progress of students and the school system.
So instead of, we could create a new 5.4 with the language that you're talking about right now.
Okay, to just incorporate all that.
Yeah, so collapse, and provide direction.
Which ones are you collapsing, Tammy?
5.4 to 5.6.
Okay, got it.
Using, using these two indicators here.
See those, 5.4, 5.1. She's taking 5.4 to 5.6 and collapsing those down.
But you're using the wording, the, the language that's on.
Incorporating the word.
Under L5.
L2.
L2, yes.
Okay, and that's bullets number one and number four?
Correct.
Yes, and then, and just incorporating that all together.
Mm-hmm.
Number five.
So to close out four, we're good with four then? I just added that one thing that I was concerned about.
Yes.
About monitoring, so, okay, so we can solidly look at five. So we need to make sure we go through each item on L, and make it sure it's included in five.
Yeah, because it has it here, under your suggested data, under the suggested data, develop system to smoothly align curriculum. I don't think that superintendent develops systems, I mean, the system is in place, you're just assessing the data, you know, in order to help students attain da-da-da-da-da, goals and requirements.
You can just see that, just say, aligns curriculum instruction assessments to help students attain, without the whole.
I would say, I would say.
Monitors.
Provides direction and monitors.
Okay.
Yeah, doesn't have to say, it doesn't say develop, it should be, gives direction and monitors curriculum instruction assessments.
Okay.
Wait a second.
Yeah.
5.1, where are you? We're at.
5.2.
We're at, under suggested data on.
I'm just telling her about suggested data.
On five.
'Cause I was still looking at the performance indicators.
Second item on there, we just wanna change that, instead of developing a system that exists.
Yes.
To align, is basically.
Provides direction.
Provides curriculum. Good idea.
What's, gonna.
Oh, here we go, the second one in there, consistently maintains databases that reflect student achievement, develop trends, and identifies achievement gaps, there.
Exactly.
It's in there, I couldn't find it anywhere on here. And then the second one talks about the achievement gaps.
Right.
Which supports the performance indicator. Okay, yeah, just wanna make sure we hit stuff clear on that. I'm sure you're doing so much work on that, Dr. Kane, the school system, the instrument needs to show where that is.
Yeah, and so I just wanted to, let me read back to you to make sure that I captured Ms. Harper's, where we were gonna collapse four, five, and six. So I'm just looking at impactful instruction and learning, appropriate technologies, I still need to add in there. So, so far I put provide direction, support, and oversight in planning and implementing programs, accountability and data systems, and then I need to say something about using the appropriate technologies then, consistent with continuous improvement efforts and attainment of instructional goals.
Perfect. Don't you think that covers?
Mm-hmm.
Improvement. And that's gonna be 5.4, correct?
That's gonna be the new 5.4.
Great.
And you, do you think that 5.3 in its current line reading, do you think that that's not also redundant?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think that one could go.
Because that isn't, what is included.
That's inherent in the appropriate curriculum.
So 5.3 can come out?
Yeah.
Okay. Then is 5.2 covered under what you just?
Align with standards and anticipate occupational trends, as well as, I would say, provide oversight, because we do, because, you know, standards change, and we do wanna.
Oversight of standards that anticipate.
So we do, I would say, provide oversight for curriculum aligned with standards that anticipate occupational trends.
Okay.
College and career readiness.
See that in five, too.
Okay, okay.
Take out the word designs.
Yeah, I just thought that that could be.
But then provide oversight.
Yeah.
Oversight four.
'Cause there, the verbs here are verbs that is not relevant to a superintendent in particular.
No, no.
Not doing the work, but providing guidance and oversight.
Correct.
Good, okay, so then we have a 5.1, a 5.2, we crossed out 5.3, so what I was reading as a new 5.4 is actually 5.3.
Yes.
And I'd added what Captain Kelly said, under suggested data and documentation, and let me make sure that I finished writing that. So we have one line, the first bullet says promotes the success of every student, and then we needed to add conducts routine monitoring visits to attain the effectiveness of instructional program.
Okay.
And instructional goals.
Right.
There's something that's, in the AAS, it discusses about the hiring of highly qualified, most qualified personnel.
Mm-hmm.
Consider that under the leadership, instructional leadership?
We had.
Honestly, via human resources.
Yeah, we had.
That's more of human resources.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's what we did.
Six.
Yeah, that's why I didn't think it was a very good indicator.
For here.
For here.
Yeah, for, it would be six for us.
Do that again, Dr. Kane. Where did, was that Tammy, the hiring, right?
Under domain L.
Oh, we don't have it, okay.
Um.
No, I was asking Dr. Kane to.
Oversees recruitment, appointment, induction, and assignment of the most qualified personnel available, that, to me, would be under standard six.
Where L what, which one, L what, L3?
L3.
Looks like the fourth one there.
One, two, three, the fourth one down.
Okay.
Put standard six.
Be under six. 'Cause that, yeah, that's how I read it.
I think we have that in here.
I saw that before. By 6.1.
6.1.
I was still working on for this, I'm sorry, I just happened to see that.
Mm-hmm. So, it sort of aligns with 6.10, recruits and assigns the best available personnel in terms of personal and professional competence.
Saw it.
Okay.
I knew I saw that before.
Mm-hmm.
Assisted with district policies, provides formal and informal feedback, accurate evaluation records, all that should be under HR. The sixth one down?
Evaluate, did you just say evaluate performance?
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, all of those, all the way down would be under HR.
Collective bargaining.
We have that in some of those comments.
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay, I'm sorry, we're digressing.
Can you go down?
Well, the achievement gaps is in this, is in that one as well. So we're still looking at the, um, suggested data and documentation.
Achievement gaps, yes.
And the last bullet.
"Periodically briefs boards on databases highlighting achievement gaps in equity and programming."
Okay.
Should we throw that on that, just under that?
You read down, um, 6.1 through 6.13, you know, they do cover the, I'm not saying we have to stick with those, but they do cover a lot, they're kind of repetitious.
Yeah, I, I have it right here, I, I'll give it to Jackie, I'll see where it's
Equity and program. For our performance standard 6? Is that what you're looking at?
On this page. I was really seeing more HR on this. But when you have up here, uh, still, working on standard 5, you have effective, highly effective, and it says creates, creates. I think those create needs to be saved, promotes, rather than creates. Because it's not creating in an organizational culture, you're promoting.
Oh, in the rubric?
In the rubric.
In number 5?
Under, number 5.
Right here.
Under highly effective.
Oh, I see create, okay.
I'd like the word, I'm sorry.
Promotes.
I just think promotes sounds like, rather than, because it's not creating, it's promoting.
Organizational culture, tentative lead.
I agree with that. In all those items.
All of them can change up to promote, okay.
Craig, you see anything in this section that you're a lot curriculum and instruction?
Yeah, I think you're
Have any ideas you'd be up for that?
I think that's covered. I honestly, I think that's
What's covered down?
I think, I think that the collapsing of those three has made it
Oh.
more definitive.
The ineffective?
And, and then this. Oh, with the ineffective too, I think that this, yes.
Okay.
Would make this all
Yeah, okay.
streamlined and understandable. Have I lost you?
Uh-uh. Just seeing where we can if we can push these together.
Yes.
And on those 6.1 to 6.13, Dr. Kane, you, you do all of, I mean, are all of those things that the superintendent does do, or? It's just, we go through a lot about recruiting
Where are you?
Assigning.
So we're, we're, are we
Standard 6.
Okay, were we done with standard 5? I just want to be sure that, so I can
I'm good with it.
We're good?
Are you with it?
Um, let me just be sure that we said something about professional development.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's, probably follows all through that.
You know what, there's not a lick, there's nothing in here about professional development.
No, it's, then it's in, it's up in the other one.
It's in which one?
The other, leadership one.
Oh, do we put it in that?
It's in 6, it's in 6, there's one in 6.3. "Develops and executes robust professional development plans."
Oh, okay.
As long as we hit it.
Where is that in?
Okay.
6.3.
Oh, 6, okay.
Under, under human resource.
6.2, "Develop future leaders, central office."
Feel that, that should stay in HR.
"Conduces routine monitoring visits to obtain in 5."
So, under, under the performance standard number 6, on these words that say "develops."
One more 5, Dr. Kane. Let me finish.
Oh, okay, so "Develops and executes robust professional development plans district-wide," so yes, I think that's, I think that's appropriate.
You think "develops"?
Certainly provides guidance and oversight, um, because it's
Direction.
Yeah.
Which section are you wanting?
Performance standard number 6.
Direction.
I think, I think, provides direction
Mm-hmm.
or oversight on some of these words, rather than develops.
Mm-hmm. So for 6.3, um, provides direction, um, you said, and oversight of robust professional development plans district-wide.
Oversight of robust professional development plans district-wide.
Okay.
6.5 would change also to provide direction and oversight.
"Develops instructional leadership capacity of staff." I don't
Do you, um, do you
They even note.
Establish a process, what you, what are you looking at?
Go ahead.
I was looking at establishing a process to identify and develop future leaders for school and central office positions, I think that's a good thing to have.
Yeah, that's a good one.
We need to, to do that, I think you're having trouble with people wanting to go up.
But is it your process, or is that the HR director's process?
Well, the, the
Or gives guidance?
It's, it's really both.
Okay.
You're overseeing.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's happening.
Yeah.
She has identified that as an issue.
Yeah.
So she identified the, the
And so sometimes the superintendent's got ideas that have to be implemented. So sometimes you are developing those systems and programs and, but you certainly are providing direction for it, but I, I think as it is, establishes
Okay.
is the right verb.
Well, if you have establishment, then you also, and maintains.
Uh-huh, maintaining a process?
Yep.
Because you can establish it, but you've got to make sure, make sure that it's, the process is continued.
Got it. It establishes and maintains
Mm-hmm.
a process to identify.
So in that regard, is 6.5 then not redundant of 6.2? Or can it be incorporated in 6.2?
What is a instructional leadership capacity?
That's what I'm saying.
What is that? That is
Yep, that would be
Evaluating your people.
Developing principles
Yeah.
would be a huge part of that.
So instructional leaders, aspiring leaders.
So wouldn't you already be doing that at 6.2?
No, we're done at 6.5, that's, that's kind of developing instructional leadership capacities.
Yeah, that is redundant.
Yeah.
Okay, so 6.5 can come out?
Goes away, yeah.
Because that's pretty much 6.2, which you've just said.
Right.
So 6.6 and 6.7 can actually be joined?
Yeah, I'm thinking the same thing.
Provides and supports?
Uh-huh.
Provides oversight and supports?
Yep.
The collective bargaining process.
Okay. And 6.8, I mean
Did you want to put laws and processes, or just processes? Supports bargaining strategies based upon collective bargaining laws and processes. Provides oversight for collective bargaining.
She's doing, she's providing oversight and supports bargaining strategies based upon collective bargaining laws and processes
Okay.
while establishing, while maintaining productive relationships with the bargaining groups.
Yes, 6, 6 through 8 can go together, yeah, is what you're saying.
Okay, all three of those. While, while maintaining productive relationships with the bargaining groups.
Okay.
Is that good?
We can combine those three, 6.6, 6.7, 6.8.
We're almost making the page shorter. I did not see number 7, did you? Sorry, I missed one. What, you're missing seven?
Yeah.
Yeah, I print that one out, I missed it. I printed them out a second time and gave them to you.
Ah.
Oh, you're missing, it should be there.
Up, up. There we go.
My dog ate it, mine.
I don't have a dog, can't blame you. Okay.
So it, and on the rubric, then we need to merge those words.
Yeah, well, let's finish
I think that's not so hard to do, we can do that after.
Yeah, let's do 7.
So I'm thinking 6.9 and 6.11.
Thinking this.
Were you thinking that? So 6.9 knows and follows proper procedures for staffing, and 6.11 establishes and uses selection procedures that ensure fairness and equity in selecting the best candidates for employment and promotion, so
Delete 9, delete 9 then, yeah.
Yeah, because
That is a proper procedure, you repeated it.
Yeah. So we'll, uh, 6.10 becomes 9, and we just will renumber.
10 sounds a lot like 11 also. No, I guess they're separate.
Because of that personal and professional competence.
You need that, you know, you're right. And then the second thing is through the lens of equity. Pretty much.
For employment, for, at the end of point, um, at 6.11?
Right.
Okay.
It does, that shows the equity part.
Yep.
Okay, so it's in there.
Okay, so we already have equity, so establishes, you want to leave it just like it is then?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
I think that covers my concerns. It's on the hiring side.
6.11, you say the same.
So we're leaving 10 and 11, but they may have new numbers.
Uh-huh, they will. Thank you.
So we go with 6.12 and 6.13?
Are we actually still establishing, um, induction procedures?
Well, but it won't go on forever.
Yeah.
Um, so this one probably should also, um,
Be like
Provide direction and oversight.
Right. For formal and informal induction. Because it can always be improved, but it doesn't have to be totally established.
Correct. Okay.
Yeah, and 13's fine.
Okay. So you want to look at the rubric here?
I think after we're done with all of them, then we should go back and look at the rubrics.
Okay.
And then we can change, you know, combine those. Tammy recommended, that was a good idea, so we can
And decide which ones stay and which ones maybe
Yeah, and how we merge them together, because like, ineffective and these improvement, and like on 6, that could be merged to say does not, or unevenly staffs, blah, blah.
So are you done with number 6?
I am.
So number 7?
6.
I truly think some of these are very subjective.
Yes, when you say 7 coincides with
And I, um, under, in the AAS, under professionalism
P, 7 goes with P.
Right. Relates to board member, staff, and others in ethical or professional manner. I think is more in line with 7.1 than I think she even replaced that, but
I'm sorry, give that to me one more time.
7.1 I think it's just kind of long and wordy. But it's, if you just say that superintendent works and relates with the board member, staff, and others in ethical, professional manner, then I think that would cut to the chase.
So it, do you see
Or do you want to keep it?
The AAS one
That's where I am.
Is that where you are, standard P1? So do you like the superintendent models, professional moral, and ethical standards, as well as personal integrity in, in all interactions?
There you go.
You like that one?
I like that.
Okay, so we can just
And then, yeah, because
Substitute that for this long one in 7.1, okay.
Okay, take out 7.1, that's what you're saying, and just replace it with that. Well, because you're already doing that in the other standards.
And actually, in this one, I thought this would be a good place to include "Maintains proper licensure and certification, participates in professional growth activities to demonstrate that you're meeting your certification standards."
Okay. That is, that's the professionalism, that's right.
That's under performance P3, is that where?
I found, yeah, in professionalism. But I didn't see it really addressed in the evaluation.
Okay. Uh, let's see here.
That's a good point.
Okay, maintains proper licensure and certification.
Yep.
That's the last one down here. What did you, oh, the bottom, where?
Mm-hmm. And then the first one under P3. "Participates in professional growth activities, including conferences, workshops, coursework," da-da-da-da.
So that would have to be its own. So make that 7.2, or because honestly, 7.2 as it is on here, "Models principles of self-awareness, reflective practice, transparency, ethical behavior."
Just a dead end one.
Yeah, I think it's, exactly. So if the new 7.2 is, participates in professional growth activities, and add that, end of that wit, and then says, "While maintaining proper licensure and certification," you could add, lump all that and make it 7.2. I lost you, Jack.
Okay, so we're gonna, we switched out 7.1 for P1, under performance standard, and we're switching out 7.2 for
For P3.
P3, the first bullet under, uh, performance indicators for P3.
And then the last one.
And the last bullet.
And, um, and maintains proper licensure and certification.
While maintaining proper
While maintaining.
It just completes it. I know it sounds like a run-on sentence.
That's how my 15-year-old does essays. Continuing and continuing.
And then 7.3, to me, also is completely subjective. So I don't, wouldn't even know how you would be able to document that.
The safeguard democracy.
Yeah, I get it, but it's
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know.
Hey, this is what they have in one comical, okay?
I know, I get, I get that, but I just think it's too subjective for us to be able to put in this
It's not measurable.
It is not measurable.
Yeah, that's the way to say it, it's not measurable.
As well as 7.4.
Although 7.3, the first bullet, is, is doable. Model and promote multicultural awareness, gender sensitivity, and appreciation of diversity in the community.
Okay, well, that was already addressed under
What is it?
Yeah, that was already addressed with, uh, community relations. And in
Okay.
Human resources, so Yeah, 7.3 and 7.4, I don't find measurable, so I didn't know what you all
Laws regarding individual and group rights and responsibilities. Actually, I, I think we do have that, that kind of a thing included somewhere else. I just saw it in the, I'll tell you where I wanted it to have it.
That's why I think that performance standards should be just professional, professionalism.
And take off ethical leadership.
I mean I don't know, Dr. Kane?
So I'm going back to 3, um, standard 3, to see if that was
Wasn't already addressed.
Captured right. Multicultural awareness. Yeah, but
Again, you don't think that's under professionalism, do you? Oh, we have cultural awareness under community relations.
I could see how it could cross, I, I, I'm sorry.
In 3.4, you, you, it's touched on, establishes effective school-community relations and school business partnerships, if you wanted to reword that in 3.4 a little bit, under communication and community relations, rather than leadership and professionalism. To me, leadership and professionalism is about how you're maintaining
Of the superintendent. How the superintendent is maintaining his or her position.
So could it be, so 3.2 demonstrates effective communication skills, written, verbal, nonverbal, formal, informal, blah blah. But then the bullet models professionally appropriate communication skills, interpersonal relations and conflict mediation? It doesn't call out the specific groups.
Community relations.
I could, I could see how this would be in professionalism.
Okay. With 7.1.
I'm trying to think if it would be more appropriate someplace else, though. Let's look, let me look at visionary leadership, if it touches. Not in particular.
No.
That's not where it might go in.
So maybe appropriate to leave that.
That's why I thought communications and community relations, it would.
You think it would fit better there?
Although it's a, it's a strong enough professional aspect they need to be, I think, to emphasize it in professionalism. You know what I mean?
Yes.
If we threw it under community relations, like, okay, we all get along in the community. But I think it's unique to.
So this is actually the school.
Then we can make that one 7.3.
Okay.
Okay.
So we cross the safeguarding the values of democracy, but we put something actionable.
Correct.
Make that models and promotes multicultural awareness, gender sensitivity, and the appreciation of diversity in the community.
Okay, and then that would also cover 7.4.
Social justice and ensures the individual student needs and formal aspects of schooling.
I think it would cover it.
The ones in the community, ones in schools, I don't know.
You think add social justice to which one, Mr. P?
I got models, promotes multicultural awareness, that one, gender sensitivity.
Wouldn't that consider?
Promotes.
For school and the community. Add school and community together.
So, okay, how about this? Models and promotes multicultural awareness, gender sensitivity, where is that? Social justice, and the appreciation of diversity in the school and community.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good.
Read that one more time, please.
Sure. Models and promotes multicultural awareness, gender sensitivity, and then I went down to 7.4 and I pulled out social justice and the appreciation of diversity in the school and community.
Okay, great, thank you.
So here's a big million-dollar question, how would you document that?
Well.
Going to multicultural events by attending.
Absolutely.
Say meetings.
And how we monitor resolving issues, whether they're disciplinary or otherwise, in the schools.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
For the social justice fees.
Okay. Yeah, I was, I, that would, that to me was very aside ambiguous, who's just, there's no empirical data supporting any of this.
Really important, because they're even in the, in the legislation.
Exactly. Social justice.
Social justice.
And it's going to show itself in discipline.
Yeah.
And so that's, that's a place to, to start to look.
Okay.
And what they call that is not.
Practices, social emotional learning and social justice.
In the, in this discipline system, they're pushing to do to reform people. Restorative practices. That's, there's actually legislation about that. To do restorative practices for student discipline, as opposed to just, you know, punishing them and kicking them out on the street. They're really pushing that right now in state of Maryland. That's, that's going to be kind of easy to show.
Did we say leave that second bullet under 7.3?
We haven't addressed that one.
Okay, is knowledgeable about, about laws regarding individual and group rights and responsibilities, and scrupulously avoids actions that might violate them.
Where's that?
Wow.
I don't know how to do that, though.
That's the fourth bullet under 7.2.
Seven, three.
The second bullet, 7.3.
Yeah, I don't know how you'd ever even show that.
Where?
It's the second bullet under 7.3.
We must have a different version.
Yeah, we don't have this, we don't have that same version.
Oh, she's got it.
Oh, yeah, we don't have this.
Oh, so we don't have this?
Yeah, this is what ours looks like.
Wouldn't you consider that you already know the laws regarding individual rights? I mean, wouldn't that be, it's part of the job?
Well, I certainly would say that if
But hope so.
You're not violating any laws.
Says to avoid actions that might violate them. I don't like, I mean, I don't like that one at all.
That's.
Cross that one.
Yeah.
So we're gonna remove.
The only thing I didn't want to have on here is that it would be subjective to somebody on the board to say, oh, well, I don't consider him or her ethical. So I would give them, you know, a bad performance on it. You know, I mean, you could be.
Because it's a personal opinion.
It's a personal opinion. And I, I want everything to be measurable, as much as possible. Because this isn't just for us, this is people who, when we're not here.
Yeah, and then superintendent needs to be able to say, this is what I did.
Right, exactly.
And have some evidence to.
Exactly.
Fit that highly effective, right?
So did your, did your original sheet have any others? Okay.
That was it.
And as I look at the AASA ones, make sure.
Yeah, I didn't see anything on here that we could add.
Okay.
I mean, I may not see everything.
Well done, I think we got through seven.
Okay, I think we picked some of those in the others.
And do we like the title, Ethical Leadership and Professionalism? Or do we want to? No, we don't like the word ethical leadership.
I would just leave it as leadership and professionalism.
I, I agree. I know, just slightly that word ethical out it.
Suggested data and documentation.
Yeah, that was somewhere here on suggested data would be, you know, licensure and certificates. You know, meetings, you know, workshops, conferences, membership, you know, personal, and professional organizations. And that would be, definitely be, be able to be documented.
A lot of these, I'm sure you do them and you sit at your desk and struggle with some of these decisions, but we don't see that.
Right.
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 Exactly. So under suggested.
Does the right thing.
Yes, routinely does the right thing, I mean.
That's also subjective. You know?
Yeah, there's no way to measure that.
There's no way to measure.
Unless we're sitting in the office watching her.
Right.
Struggle over these decisions.
I'm not going to do that, I'm sorry.
You mean you don't have time?
I don't have time to sit and watch you.
Here's some, some actual suggested data and documentation Jackie thought of. On the, the last page, turn the page over on P.
AASA, done.
AASA, oh, perfect. Last page is serving on, she is serving on some leading some committees and.
Exactly, that's exactly what we're just talking about.
So those are great data and documentation.
I'm fine with that. Fabulous. Thanks for seeing that.
We could take some of the foo-foo out.
Fluff?
Yeah, fluff.
Yeah. So.
Do you want to include what?
Is there, are there any that you don't want to add because they look all relevant to me?
They are.
Yeah. So we'll just lift these?
To any future superintendent, right?
Right. Supports goals, supports and participates in efforts to align district goals and activities with community endeavors. Organizes, facilitates, and presents at local, state, national, contributes to and supports the development of profession by serving as instructor, mentor, coach, presenter, researcher, supervisor. Serves on district, state, or national committees and maintains an active role in professional organizations. Yeah.
Are we removing everything that's under there and replacing with this?
That'd be awesome, thank you.
And then. I guess we, would we pull out, are we going to pull out some of the fluff here? Professional honest person who works every day to make decisions in the best interests of students in my district.
Yes.
I would just do away with all of those.
Yeah, I was going to say, are there any that you want to leave, is the question?
No, I honestly no.
Okay.
So if she has the suggested data there, documentation, use that rather than.
And is there anything else we could put in there for documentation on working, what is it, a colleague, what do we, what do we end up deciding on for the performance indicators? Some of them. Promoting multicultural awareness, gender sensitivity, appreciation of diversity, social justice.
Well, that'll all be documented by all the different meetings.
Right, I guess.
Goes to, and yes, no.
And some of it is, is like how she portrays that to the student, to the to the principals, you know, she does have those principal meetings where hopefully some of this comes out. Like how, take for example, the way she, or the superintendent would be emphasizing the lens of, of equity, which is a really good way to to get the whole idea across. Did you read that card? It was really good to, I mean, I should do that in my life, too, you know, when I look at that card.
So say for example, today, it's funny that you should bring that up. So today, we shared that with administrators, with ANS, and we talked about how we might implement and, and really utilize those questions in our schools or our departments here at central office. And so what I'd be able to provide as evidence of that is the actual presentation, the agenda that reflects that that is the work that we're doing.
Okay. That's perfect.
So that's probably covered in them.
Exactly.
All right, I understand, thank you.
Now, this, the meeting we had, this is what we did.
Right.
Here, and show them, yes, that would be documented.
Okay. So when we do get to a point of the, using the actual evaluation, that's the kind of stuff we would need you to provide us with.
Exactly. Concrete examples, exactly. Evidence.
And it's not just us saying, oh, she's a nice lady, she's ethical.
Right, exactly.
Okay, yeah, can you, right, you want to get into that?
No, just.
It's like a lawsuit waiting to happen.
She is a nice lady.
No, I was. She is, it was just when you said, no, she's a nice lady, we'll evaluate all of this.
I thought you were going to say something funny.
So we're done with that, and now we're going to work on the performance ratings, is that what I understand?
You mean the rubrics?
The rubrics, to combine this.
That's the next thing, can we take a break? You guys want to take a quick break?
I was going to ask if we could take a break, have some dinner.
Let's do that and let your, let your brain relax for a minute.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we can take a break.
Number eight. There are meetings posted for staff to be able to go, to have conversations. So all that can be documented, that this was held, this was held, this was held, so I think we're covering our bases on that.
And that also would cover the, because it's community collaboration for that one.
Right.
Right.
And modeling, and modeling the.
And the last one, the last Sunday supper conversations on race, we had our consultants that do professional development for diversity attend that also, so that they have and understand what's happening in the community, not just the school.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, is everybody almost ready to restart?
Icing is good, and I'm usually not a big icing person.
I'm not even, I'm too. I'm, I'm, I had two wraps, they were good.
I'm good, all right.
Okay, everybody set?
Thanks, Jeff.
Ready?
Okay, welcome back. The next step we're going to take, since we've got most of our, our standards and ratings all done, we're going to combine the rubrics on each of the performance standards. And we're combining ineffective and needs improvement into one, ineffective. Then we, that way we have ineffective, effective, and highly effective. Do you want to put a 1, 2, 3 on those?
That's fine.
So let's just call them 1, 2, and 3. And 3, we're making highly effective.
Okay.
3's a good thing.
Effective, and then ineffective is.
Is a 1, a 1, 2. Because part of ineffective is, we'll be incorporating needs improvement, so it isn't like they're zeros. So we start out with the first one, limited evidence. The way they're, they're set up, as I was learning about this and reading it, is if you go straight across, it, it will usually they go together, like ineffective is limited evidence, exists district vision implemented in, or limited evidence of a vision. Next one is referencing the vision, the next one is articulating it, and the next one is a clear coherent, you know? So as you move over, the highly effective is like the best kind of vision to have. Not in every situation, but in most of them. So basically, 1 and 2, we're combining into 1.
Well, I would even say that any of those underneath approved could just go away.
Right, because that's saying limited, as opposed to no.
Yeah, so just get rid of it.
Agreed. And 2 also, action.
Yes, is engaged in, yeah, just get rid of it. Because ineffective covers it.
Is it difficult to know what the district stands for? Yeah, so I mean, you leave in it's difficult to know what the district stands for.
Yeah.
What we should do though is, is look up. Do you think, do you think we need to look at the performance standard indicators and see that they are reflected down here in the rubric? We haven't done that, that's a big jump.
I think we need to do that. We started doing that with the first few, but we need to make sure that we've done it.
Right, so if everyone could just scan through that.
Yeah, we did. And I don't have a new copy, so I don't know. Is it on?
I can print one for you.
Well, if it's in there, I'll just get my computer.
It should be in your email.
Okay. Let me just pull that up.
Well, wait a minute. Was, was everybody on that email that you sent to Catherine Kelly?
Mm-hmm, I think so. You mean with the new? Oh, yeah. You got it, or you should have gotten it. That's what I've been operating.
Let me pull it up that way Michelle and I can see it together.
It was a summary of what we did with all of your, your changes in it, she put that in there. What I'll do is, I'm going to go print this.
Okay.
Yeah, if you can. I stopped spinning. I'll walk down and get it, I'll print your copies.
Okay.
You're right, she's going to print two copies.
Oh, Jackie, thank you.
If you were, if you're looking on your computer, the date is April 4. And I just resend it again, just so it's at the top of your email.
And I think what the easiest thing would be to look at like 1.1. Not worry too much about the bullets below it, because that's the overall picture of that bullet, and then be sure there's, it's reflected in effective and highly effective aspects of the rubric, it would be my recommendation. It would be my recommendation. You know what, I'm thinking, one of the better ways to approach this, instead of trying to work together on what the wording we put in each one, we have seven of these standards. Why don't each of us take, like, 2, and then just work independently and compare? We're just comparing that what we've said in this standard has something reflected in here. And then we could individually put the words in ourselves and see if everyone agrees. Wouldn't that be an easier way to do it than all of us working on each one by our, you know, together?
Well, I'm gonna ask a question.
Yeah, 'cause I may have questions, too.
Well, the big question is, do we even need the rubric? I mean, reading through these, in my mind, you didn't do it, you did it, you overachieved in it. Do I, do I really need to go into descriptors to tell me?
Especially when there's evidence being supplied?
That's a good question. Because part of what we're gonna see, the board, is from the superintendent. Now, I developed the, any changes I made to the highly effective, and that's the main thing I looked at, because if I was a superintendent, I'd wanna be that highly effective side. But to put it in there, I would go back and look at this and then say, okay, that would be... But it is kinda repeating the words.
Yeah.
It is.
So if, if we set at the beginning, which you already have, the definition of ineffective, effective, and highly effective, and you put your, your number equivalent by each of those, do you really need to detail it out in a rubric in every single performance standard?
When the superintendent is gonna be giving you comments and providing documentation? So there's no reason to have a rubric?
Yeah. What do you think, Dr. King?
So, and I, I'm leaning toward what you just said there, because it's, it's pretty clear. And what we were just doing is, we were pulling up some sites where you can create, make, have rubrics made for you. So you put in, like, just the highly effective, and it'll make it for you, 'cause this is a lot of work to go back and do all of that.
Yes.
So either we could, if we decided we wanted to use one, we need to go to an online rubric maker. But if we don't need one...
This is what, this is what, and it's so fun, Michelle had supplied us with, and we could just make three columns. Ineffective, effective, and highly effective. And then just, this is, this is, here's your 1.4, here's your 1.5, and then have the little lines, and you just put it on there where it is.
And a place for comments.
At the end.
Underneath of each one of those standards.
Comments and documentation.
Right, I think it's pretty clear with the standard and the indicator. And then we have been specific about what we're looking for in terms of the documentation or the evidence that we're gonna use.
Agreed.
So, I, I agree with you, I think it's probably redundant.
Just remove the rubrics.
Yeah, I didn't know.
And then, again, like I said, create the, create it where...
Yeah, so you can write the...
Here's 1.1, 1.2, and then 3, here's ineffective, effective, highly effective.
And you'll be looking at the documentation that superintendent provided you for each item?
This document could go down to five pages.
So the solely judge, sole judgment call you're making is, was it, in fact, highly effective stuff? Like, superior stuff?
Right.
Was it effective, works, and was it no good?
Correct.
I think that might be, I just wanted, we're trying off really hard not to put too much of the subjective stuff into it.
So what we probably need to tease out is, in the beginning...
I went there, too.
Right. Of the, mhm, of the document where it does list out the performance ratings and gives the definition for what is ineffective and what is effective and what's highly effective.
Okay.
Because it's, it's those little nuances that are going to... Because let's just say, for example, we use the, the equity piece, and I show you that we have given, we've given access to the questions to the school board, we've done professional development with our administrators, all of A and S, we all have an equity goal, we're working with E O S, equal opportunity schools, and somebody says, okay, well, you're doing it, but what is gonna get me? I'm gonna wanna know, what's gonna get me to highly effective in that area versus effective?
Correct.
She has to be able to see.
What's the distinction?
Distinction.
Distinction.
And I think that's probably, because a lot of evaluations have at least four, some have five, at least four ratings. So maybe I am doing a little of equal opportunity schools, and that's going well, but perhaps I need some improvement, because I'm only doing some equity work at high school, you know, if that were the case. So maybe that's an area where you might not say it's ineffective, 'cause it is not that it's not happening, it's just that it's not happening to the degree I need to show some growth in that area. So that's the distinction between ineffective and needing improvement.
Okay, so ineffective, needs improvement, effective?
And, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't...
No, 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 but if we added an extra one in here and made it 5 instead...
I don't know that we need 5.
I don't think so either, and I think 3 covers it.
Yeah, I was just using that as an example.
No, she, I don't think she had a problem with the ineffective matching with being matched.
It's the description.
Exactly.
Yeah. So if we, we think we should do away with the rubrics, then we need to focus on what is effective, what's ineffective, and what's highly effective. And we need to make sure that's very clear.
Elsewise, we probably need to keep the rubric, because it's going to say, you know, maybe if there's an indicator, maybe 1.5 indicator, 1.5 has three bullets under it, and if I hit two of those bullets, then, you know, that's effective. But if I hit one, I need some improvement, or maybe that's ineffective. Whichever, however you wanna look at it, but it's just those distinctions that we have to be clear about in the definition.
And we're definitely gonna have some objective...
Exactly.
You have to.
It is, it is.
Because we don't see you every day, you have to go with...
And, and between yourselves, somebody might say, well, I think that that's great, and somebody might say, well, that's just normal, that's what's expected. And so you gotta come to some agreement as to, you know...
Because we're human, right.
Well, I think ineffective is covered.
Yeah.
I think effective is covered, too. I mean, it's...
Well, effective, the only thing I would take out of there is, performance is adequate, I would take that out. Performance is meeting the standard associated with the performance. Well...
Associated with...
Job expectations or the...
Performance is meeting the expectations of job performance.
Is that what they go on with? We're not...
Or of the performance standard, just to keep the language consistent. So for effective, performance meets expectations of the performance standard.
Right, this performance standards.
Okay.
Did you get that?
Well, I don't think the performance standards are established by the superintendent, or for the, no, it says for the superintendent, okay.
Yeah.
It's associated with performance standard established, okay. Oh, I see.
Performance meets expectations of the performance standards, is that what you said?
Okay. You're exceeding expectations.
Interesting, the way we described, right in the very beginning, performance ratings. Each standard is described in further detail through the indicators. The indicators are not to be rated individually, but are only listed to help think about the meaning of the standard. The standard should then be rated as ineffective, effective, and highly effective, as described below. I wonder, we're, we're thinking of rating them individually, right?
Well, no, because the, the standard is standard 1, standard 2, standard 3. Now, we put the indicators, like we were supposed to, underneath of each of the standards, but when we're talking about the rating, we're talking about, does the superintendent meet the standard for visionary leadership? And I can tell, because I know that the superintendent has developed and implemented a shared vision and mission, the superintendent has provided evidence of that, that superintendent has supported the district's mission by identifying and articulating educational needs of students. So it really is the standard that we're rating.
Overall standard, so we need to be careful with that evaluation sheet, not to individually rank each indicator.
Yeah, so if you're reading through these, and you're like, oh, no, she totally missed it on that one, that's where your 1, 2, or 3 would go in, and that I use, it's an Excel document. As soon as you put your scores in, it scores it for you. So it tells you where your score's gonna fall.
So we are really rating...
Yeah.
Individual indicators?
You're using the indicators to guide your thinking as to whether or not the superintendent has met that standard.
Okay, and we could do it by the form of it, you know, those three.
So this language is exactly what you wanna do. So the indicators aren't to be rated individually, but they're listed there to help you think about the meaning of the standard. They help guide your thinking as to whether or not the superintendent has met that standard, or to what degree, effective, highly effective, or if they've not met it at all, ineffective.
And I still don't get it, because our form is saying, we're saying individually each one, whether we're meeting that or not, if we, if we move with that form thing.
If you went to a form like that, your, your indicators...
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
I like, 'cause we're talking about doing it together.
But you could, you could use that as evidence, you know? You could, you don't have to say that that's a 1, 2, or 3, but you could check met or not met.
With evidence, that's how we, yeah. Because otherwise, we are not taking the full standard, we're doing them individually.
Right, so, I think that is, is an example, as...
Well, I like it, because we were able to...
Yes, and if we could put it into a better form than this, we could mark it and say, is this, and work, is this effective?
So like this one, these are your elements, or your performance standards. So the first one would be your visionary leadership, and underneath, in the white, would be listed your indicators. And you'd have a score, 1, 2, or 3, right next to each one of them. And your next one, you do the same thing.
But that is contrary to what this...
That's what I was saying, yeah.
Yes.
Well, we might, well, we can work on that later, because we aren't gonna evaluate until finally in, in July.
Or you could think about the indicators as whether or not I've provided evidence, you know, of that.
That's in your goal sheet.
Right, that's exactly what I pulled out. So on my goals, because this isn't an evaluation, is whether or not I did what I said I was gonna do.
Okay.
It's, did I meet that? Did I do it, or did I not do it?
See, I like that.
Or to what degree?
Right.
And this isn't a rating, but it is, it helps me to stay on track, exactly.
That would be good, then we would not be in a conflict with the whole idea, the whole standard.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we could use that.
And so when it says that, you know, one of the indicate, the definitions here said something about meeting most of the standards, or what did it say? Yeah, so ineffective, performance is below acceptable levels, fails to meet most expectations associated within that performance standard. And the expectations would then be, you know, the indicators, did, you know, were they met? Were most of them met, or not?
Right.
So ineffective is gonna say what now? Performance?
But we have, what it has...
Well, it does have the definition already on that front, on that sheet. So I was just reading from there, I didn't change anything.
That was a good definition.
Okay, so I don't have that either. Is that what you're looking at, right there?
Yeah, the very first page.
This is the old one, and this is the new one she just gave me, so...
On the very first page, tell me, you've gotta flip, put it, what the first page you just had?
This is first page. It hits two different... Two different...
Know what you got.
Performance?
They'll do that, and we, yeah.
This is only stuff.
I'm gonna... We may just come, throw those down, yeah. But that's a great, that is more... Yeah.
Okay, you know, what she was writing on it, I was seeing something different. Okay, so this is it, okay. Thank you, guys.
Your brain's burnt, your brain's burnt out here.
It's two days, it's two days.
Okay, so ineffective is a good definition, are we good with that? Below acceptable, fails to meet most, okay.
So 1, 2, and then 3, okay.
And we can't, the definition of needs improvement can't really be combined into that, because ineffective says what it says, especially when it says most, not all or none, kinda thing. Then we need to look at effective. How are we changing effective, that someone was saying?
Performance meets standards.
Standards.
Where expectations associated... Job, or with, with the...
With the performance standards established.
You just said performance, is associated with performance.
Is there another word for performance?
I think just copy what we have up here, only saying, performance meets acceptable levels associated with job, of the performance standards, yeah.
Yeah, we just call them all performance standards.
Yeah. And then performance, under highly effective, performance is superior in meeting expectations of the, of the performance standards. Short and sweet.
Is that enough description of a highly effective?
So, so let's think this through. So for effective, we're saying, performance meets the standards, right? Associated the standards, because we, we know what the standards are.
Okay.
For highly, we're saying exceeds. So are we going to, because we started out saying, most were not met, and now we're saying, we need to quantify effective in order to quantify highly effective.
Okay.
So are we saying, all expectations are, are met if you're doing effective? And how do we distinguish that more than, you know, that the superintendent has exceeded the standards for that, that standard, you know?
The performance is exceptional on a regular or continuous basis.
I do like to comment in the end, though, the superintendent outperforms relative to minimum expectations. So are we saying effective is minimum expectations?
Yes.
Right, it's meeting all the standards.
Meeting all the standards and exceeding them.
But highly effective is, is exceeding...
What's required.
And outperforming relative minimum expectations.
Outperforming, yeah.
Okay.
I would leave that, I think a bigger description of how is, okay.
Okay, I like that.
I try to picture ourselves in her spot, you know? How do you show?
His, her.
So give it to me one more time, so I can make sure, performance, are we leaving it like it is?
Yes.
Okay.
Exceeding, yes. Basically, effective is the minimum, is what we're saying. Or what we believe would be the minimum. It's about the best we can do without having to still a personal decision.
We could do like they did under needs improvement, well, I guess that's a different, but we could put effective in parentheses, just to be clear. You know, where it says minimum expectation, so what's minimum? And you just said minimum is effective. So we could put effective in parentheses, just to be clear.
In the definition of effective?
Yes.
Okay.
Or highly effective, in the definition of highly effective. So, I'm down at, um, the last clause, the last part, the superintendent outperforms relative to minimum expectations, and so I thought I heard you say that minimum expectations really means effective.
Is the effective, correct.
And so, if we just put effective in parentheses, that makes it crystal clear.
Yeah. Change that name to leadership and professionalism. Okay, so we're gonna call it, this is gonna be number one, number two, number three.
Okay, yeah, that's what you said, the rubric, and we don't have that down.
Who do you want to number? Wow. But do you feel good about what we did? And same with the summary ratings, end of each one, uh, end of each one, we have a summary right here, to take out needs improvement, yeah. Are you all okay with us?
Well, there's a couple, the numbers are kinda off on some of them.
Because we added our, or, so we will, yeah, we'll have to fix the numbers for the indicators, you mean?
Because some of them have, some of them are like 2.0, and then some of them start with 4.1, so the numbers need to be...
Yeah, they should all, yeah, consistent.
After we proof all the alignment and all that, we'll be taken care of.
I'm sorry?
After we do the proofing and all that, that's where you'll address alignment and...
Okay.
Yeah, cause like, if one is 2, you've got 2, and 2.1, you need to start with 2.1.
But to be consistent, I think we should start with, uh, when we get down to, after we've stated the standard, the indicator should be a point one, so if it's 1.1, not 1.0, but 2.1, not 2.0, 3.1.
Okay, well, um, start, always start out with the point one.
Point one, mhm.
So, I have a question on here, so our mid-year meeting, May 15th, we're getting together to do this evaluation, that's what we have?
Yeah, that's what we, we need to straighten out, right? Halfway, halfway between the, the, what did we decide on the evaluation, is July, which one are you talking about?
Just let me finish, so our mid, it says here, mid-year meeting, May 15th, we'll be doing the superintendent evaluation.
Yeah.
So, will we have that in open session?
We've, we've, no, closed.
It's a closed work session?
Always closed, yeah.
Okay.
And I don't know if it's May 15th, you still haven't gotten that?
Yes, it is on, it is on here, May 15th, we will not be meeting with the superintendent, we will be meeting with Darren, correct?
No, hey, okay, here, it's April right now, right?
Yes.
April.
Yes, 10th.
We'll have this done by what we said, May 1st, it'll be?
Yes.
So, we can't really have evaluation May 15th, we have to change that, this was based on, if we got this out.
Okay.
While that, so if it's May 1st, we're gonna evaluate her, it's July, so, so we'll just have to say early May, we'll do, and I don't know if we want her to provide us information for that, or do we wanna...
That's what I'm trying to do, is give the superintendent time, I mean, this is, this is cumbersome, I don't want to overload with everything, you know, the end of the year and, you know, and testing just finished and...
I guess the question is, do we want to have a mid-year point with you, because we've worked with you on creating all this?
Well, but that doesn't help her evaluation.
I know, but do you feel like we need a mid, mid-period, or...
I don't know that we're going to have time for mid-year.
Right, right.
You know, at this point, because, so at this point, most of the year is gone by, right? So, now that we have a tool, I'm gonna have to go back and align whatever evidence I have.
Right.
Having not known that this was what I was gonna be evaluated on could present an issue, right? So, now we have a tool, but when we started this school year, I didn't know that we were going to be looking for 3.3, or 7.2, or, or any of that, so I'll have had a few weeks, not months.
That's why I'm asking about the timeframe, because I don't think it's fair to you.
Right.
Should we just move into the July, I mean, and this is a big job, to set this up in a month, for you to give to us?
Exactly.
So, I mean, and, I mean, we have to keep that in mind when we're evaluating her too, however, a lot of these factors we're do, you're doing, you know, that's how we've kinda developed this.
Okay, well, we can't get into that, we just wanna be able to address the timeframe for her, to be able to provide the documentation that is needed per the standard that we are all working on right now.
I'm just not sure if it's fair to say, tell us what you've been doing in a month.
Yeah, I don't either, that's why I'm getting to that.
Which is my point exactly, so I wouldn't say to an administrator, "Okay, you have now an evaluation tool, you got a month to prove that you did all these things, and you weren't aware that you had to do some of these things on here." Some of it is absolutely common, you know, this is what we do on a regular, but there will probably be some areas in here that we've not discussed, I might not know...
Right.
Um, that I'm gonna be, I was gonna be evaluated on them, and, you know, that, that puts me in a difficult, or any person, in a difficult situation.
So, if we say the, an August meeting, or we do this in July, and hand it to you, and in August, then you would give us, I mean, that would...
It would have to be July, we'd have to finish out, because we wanna start fresh
Come September 15th, which is the next date. Honestly.
Yes.
Okay, I, I wanna be fair and equitable.
Right, and the reason, yeah, the July is in the contract.
Right, correct.
So, we need to finish, okay, so June.
Because by September, you're giving us your goals.
For the next year.
And we really wanna be ready for that, and have, you know...
Have this on, under our belts.
Right, and, and fairly, not fairly, not...
That's exact, that's all I'm getting to, is fair and equitable solution, so, because again, it's the end of the school year, and, and right now, between now and June, holy, our holidays.
Yeah. You know, my concern would be that, you know, we're just establishing what I'm gonna be rated by, against, and then a month later, the rating happened.
Yeah.
Right, I wouldn't do that to any employee.
Right, that's why I'm thinking we, we should just do it in the July timeframe, without a interim meeting, I just don't think it's fair to ask her to go to all that in an interim meeting, so...
Yeah, we're getting kinda close.
It's getting, it's getting very... Thank you, okay, all right, thank you, thank you.
Right, yeah, we'll talk about that later, yeah.
Thank you for bringing that up, sir, okay.
Good point, thank you, Greg.
All right, well, then let's finish this, we...
Okay, everyone's seen, think of anything we haven't covered.
So, we will then go back and make all of the corrections or revisions, edits that we talked about today, and Ms. Wright will make sure that everybody gets that, and then you'll put your eye on it again.
Okay.
And, um, and then as a side, we'll create a form like the one that you did, sort of that spreadsheet with submits, un-mets, or whatever, the categories that you wanna, um, you know, include on there, so that you, it's sort of a tracking, you know, document, if you will.
Okay, and speaking of that, let's, we've got a chance here, let's complete that, um...
As far as...
Yeah, we've got, did not meet, or her, on her goals, she provides, did not meet some progress, significant progress, met or exceeded, and that's kinda how we're thinking of putting next to, on, on our grade sheet, basically.
But there may be too many categories for you.
Right, so she has, did not meet some progress, here you go, look at the top of her lines, yeah, if you guys got one of these, or you can, and we can collapse this down into, we could try to collapse it into three.
You can, we can use this one, I have one.
Oh, you have one, thank you ma'am. Bring it down, did not meet, met, exceeded, to match error.
Did not meet, met, and exceeded, yeah, that's a good, to match ineffective, effective, and highly effective. That's good.
So, which ones we're probably gonna...
We're gonna do, did not meet, met, and exceeded.
Okay.
It's a good idea.
Does that help you?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, when we talk through, um...
Okay.
The actual evaluation, we'll have to consider the timing, so we'll talk about that later, as Greg said. Okay, so when, when you, when Mrs. Wright works on it and gets it, what we think is, what she thinks is the right thing, send it out to us, and everybody please review it again, because, um, we need to list this, and I have to find out from Darren how we do that, you know, get the input from the superintendent and us to say, this is what we're gonna use, and, and this year, we'll use it the best we can, and then as we see, if we see, since it's new, that it's not effective sometime, or it's difficult, too hard to deal with, um, you know, and we'll get the input from the superintendent, then we can adjust it, you know, 'cause this is the first time we've made a one on our own like this, okay? All right, everybody okay?
Good work.
Thank you for the help on it, very much, thank you, Greg. All right, and the last thing we have on our agenda is future meetings, we have a work session on Wednesday, and we talked about it, that's gonna be primarily a couple of little admin things, and then primarily discussion on handbook, get the handbook fixed, so we can get that fixed, agreed upon, and voted on to change. The 22nd is the commissioner's hearing at Bayside Elementary, I personally am not gonna be here, I'm gonna be on vacation, because that's spring break, 22nd, but that's at Bayside, um, so as many as can attend, please do, and if you wanna make a statement, it's usually helpful, um, and did you get the information from Jackie about the Senior National Honor Society luncheon? It's a, a nice event at Bridges, and I guess you talked to them about that. Another commissioner hearing at the Liberty Building here in Centerville on the 23rd, I can make that one, I can make Southernsville Middle also, so hopefully you guys can make one or two of those. Is, is anyone available on the 22nd, that would be the one, I would hope we have one board member.
I'm going.
Okay, thanks. And then May 1st, we finally, I think, get on a good schedule, until we get our budget back, and we'll be doing a school board meeting the first Wednesday, and a work session the 5th, the, um, third Wednesday, from that point on.
Uh, the June 19th school, the work session, will more than likely be budget.
Right.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Hopefully, we can do that.
Because they will hand themselves, reconcile the budget, so just plan, that, that meeting may be longer.
Right.
I would say, you would probably have to take the rest of the afternoon off.
Well, we may be...
Correct?
We may be changing that to an evening meeting, once we get this...
We cannot, that's the third, third one.
So, once we get the, the handbook fixed, we can change it.
We'll not be getting the handbook fixed before the June meeting.
We will not?
No, we will not.
Why?
Because we would, we don't have a fifth board member yet, we have to have a quorum of four.
I have to check with Darren about that, yeah, see what the rule is on that.
Okay, so...
Okay. All right, any other questions on that? We have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion, a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Motion's carried, thank you.